I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting for Thursday, November 16th, 2023. This meeting is open to the public and will be a hybrid meeting. Attendance by committee members may be remote, and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting will have public comments. Any member of the public wishing to address the committee may do so when we reach that point in the agenda and just be sure to give your name and address before making your comments. Okay. All right. So, the first item on the agenda is a vote to accept a donation on behalf of the Leo Club. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. I'm so happy tonight to see that Gabrielle and Elizabeth Adami are here. They did a presentation when they accepted the donation from, or on behalf of the Leo Club, from Shaw's, and it was fantastic. And Mrs. Kavanaugh is here as well, of course. They are seniors at OA and leaders of the Leo Club. They are going to present what they did to earn the donation and the award, and the result, of course, was a $1,000 donation from Shaw's. And they're gonna also explain how they plan to utilize those funds. So, ladies, you're welcome to come up and present and answer any questions that the school committee may have. Thank you for coming. Welcome.
So, this is our presentation. It's an overview of what we did, overview of what we did last year and what we're planning, our goals and plans for this year and for following years. So, we did a lot of different activities that allowed us to explore many different venues, like Mansfield's Food Pantry, Easton Food Pantry, and Back to Munch. So, at Mansfield Food Pantry, we just did things like help people find the food they were looking for, help them bring it to their car, and, or just clean and organize the pantry.
So, one event that the Leo Club does is Trick or Treat So All Can Eat. It usually happens in October, around the end of the month, near Halloween, and we go to a neighborhood and go door-to-door and collect different canned goods or non-perishable foods that we can donate to the Easton Food Pantry.
So, we learned a lot from collecting donations about the society and the society's needs. And we came across, we came across the notion that we feel the society eager to support people in need, and we were able to see the impacts that our efforts had on reducing hunger and help assisting others.
Another thing the Leo Club does is preparing lunch bags for the homeless shelter. So, we use some of the money we earn from fundraising and buy different ingredients that we could put in the bags, like sandwiches or snacks and fruits, and then we deliver it to the homeless shelters near our community. Those are just some pictures from last year. And then, again, when we're done packing the lunches, we deliver it to local shelters.
So, we also learned a lot from this project, too. We saw the value of community support and collaboration by bringing together students, organizations, and supporters who've donated ingredients or helped us with the funding. And then, we also saw that the bag lunches had an influence that went beyond just applying a meal, and it really had a positive and hopeful effect on those people who received the meals. And these lessons continue to inform our club's approach to future service projects.
So, for fundraising, usually we do in-school chocolate sales, and then also out of school, we do occasionally do things like bake sales. And for using the money, we do different things. One thing we do is donate to different organizations, like the Mass Eye Research Foundations. We also buy ingredients to be able to make the lunch bags for homeless shelters, and then, yeah. So, our goals for next year and this year is to connect, collect, contribute, and create. So, we want to connect with more organizations. We want to collect more donations and information on how we can help others. We want to contribute more of our time as a club together to volunteering and community service. And then, we want to create more solutions that help make a difference in the lives of those in our community and those affected by hunger.
Fantastic. Do any committee members have any questions or comments?
That was excellent. Thank you very much for all your work.
Great work. Thank you so much for presenting and for doing the work that earned that, the donation from Shaw's. I'm grateful to Shaw's for their support of the organization.
Can you just repeat what you're using the funding for?
So, a couple of different things that we already used it for and were already used the money that we earned from fundraising for was donating to different organizations that help people with Eye Research Foundations, and also we used it to buy the ingredients and stuff that we needed to make.
Great. That's great.
Thank you.
Good work. All righty. So, we need to vote to accept the donation, and was it, it was a thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay. So, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the Shaw's donation of $1,000 on behalf of the Leo Club?
So, move DeLuca.
And can we get a second?
Wiseman, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right.
You're making a difference. I'm sure the Leo, the Leos are just as proud, Leo's Club, and the Leo's organization, I mean, and we are, of course, expressing our gratitude to Shaw's as well for that generous donation. So, thank you, ladies, for being here and for presenting tonight.
Thank you. Great work. Okay. Next on the agenda is a vote to approve a license agreement with Easton Youth Lacrosse. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Mr. Twombly, our Director of Facilities, is here, and he is going to present the license agreement. It is between the School Department and Easton Tigers Youth Lacrosse. They have been in need of replacing storage, a storage unit or storage container that's on school property that's in a state of disrepair. But in order to do that, we needed to make sure that we had a prepared and reviewed licensing agreement for things like access and liability and so forth, in terms of having the container on school property. But I'll let Mr. Twombly explain that a little bit more and answer any questions that you have for him.
Yep. So, I don't really have too much more other than what Alicia just explained. I think this was discussed at the last school committee meeting, and so we worked with Ben Taylor from Jay Talaman's office to create a license for Easton Youth Lacrosse. Jeff Dill is the representative from Easton Youth Lacrosse. The current container is, has a lot of holes in it. It has a lot of water going into the container. So, basically, Easton Youth Lacrosse approached Mary McDonald, who is now the new athletic director, and asked if they could replace the container, and that's what kind of brought us here today. So, this license is a pretty straightforward license. It's to allow them to remove the old container, which has holes and is leaking water, and to purchase a new one and put it with the other containers. If you may remember, some people who have been around the schools for a long time, the current containers, I believe there's four containers down there, they were part of the building project back in like 2008, so they are quite old. So, this particular one, we want to replace. So, I think it's a great thing that Easton Youth Lacrosse has come forward to pay for a new container and replace it. I think that's a positive thing. So, with that, I'll just kind of, if you have any questions, but it is pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Do any committee members have any questions? Look through it if you haven't. Jackie? Go ahead.
How long is this license contract for?
Well, basically, they're purchasing the container, so for as long as we want it. So, there isn't really any timeframe on it, but it's a purchased container that's going to be with the other four containers over there in the athletic fields.
And there is some termination language that gives us the right to terminate if there's, if a need arose?
Yep, that is true. Yep. I don't anticipate having any issues, but you never know.
Six, item 17.
There's also a copy of their insurance, or they are insured. That was one of the things that we made sure they had insurance in case someone were to, you know, go into the container and trip or something, whatever happened, they do have insurance. And they may, they must maintain that insurance for as long as that container is there. That's the language that's in the contract.
Jackie, did you have any questions on it? It all looks good to you? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion, then, to approve the license agreement with Easton Youth Lacrosse?
So, move DeLuca.
Second, Wiseman.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Twombly.
Great, thanks a lot. Have a great Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving, everybody. Take care.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is a vote to approve the RMK, Raising Multicultural Kids, contract. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Actually, Assistant Superintendent Pruitt will explain this contract. It is, as you can see, for a total of $34,605. It's a one-year contract, and it is being paid for out of our S.R. III funds, but I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the program that it's funding, the DCLO.
Thank you so much. So, RMK has been a wonderful, RMK, Raising Multicultural Kids, has been a wonderful partner of the Easton Public Schools, and they have a program that we are utilizing in our elementary schools. The two acronyms are LILS, L-I-L-S, and the other one is DCLO. The LILS program is in our preschool, and we have college and graduate students that are diverse leaders in their universities that are coming in and doing lessons with our preschool students and our kindergartners. And then, the DCLO acronym, the DCLO program is grades one through five, and it is also utilizing diverse students, college and graduate students, to do lessons with our students on diversity with the teacher and also providing some professional development for our teachers as well. The reason there is a large cost increase this year because of the S.R. III grant, we were able to provide opportunities for more classrooms. So, we did utilize this program last year. It was under the threshold to ask you for your need to approve the contract as far as cost-wise, but this year, we were able to, due to the funding that we had, utilize this year to really ensure that every teacher that would like to participate in this program did have the ability to do so. So, we are currently servicing just under 50 classrooms through this program. The diverse students come in every other week for a period and provide, like I said, lessons. They do some activities along with the books that they may read, and it's enforcing diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, which, as you know, is a huge focus of ours over the past few years.
So, any questions from committee members?
I was just wondering, is there any other, are there programs that are going to be implemented within the higher grades, like such as?
So, last year, we were able to have a middle school program focusing on identity and really focusing on self.
Love.
Love, thank you. So, that was at the middle school last year. We are looking at potentially bringing that back this year. And then, at the high school, we don't have any program in there yet. Kelly, just, sorry. So, that's something that we will be looking at with that. We have a lot going on at the high school as far as diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, so we're hoping that the RMK looks at our elementary and middle school as well, but there absolutely will be opportunities to explore the higher levels as well.
And at the high school and middle school level, are we still in the ADL pilot? Okay. And that's part of?
We also have, sorry. No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that the ADL isn't a pilot anymore. It's part of our programming.
Okay.
And in fact, we do have, we just secured some dates for our student leaders to be trained again, because sometime, you know, with the cohorts, as they go through, we need more training. So, we will be utilizing, they will be trained in January. Two separate groups will come in to train our high school students and our middle school students again.
And while it's not this specific vendor that might be at the high school, we do have, for example, and Still We Rise is going to be, or has already started at the high school, which creates opportunities for affinity spaces for students to have conversations and, you know, safe spaces to share. And so, we have a lot of different organizations and vendors, so it might not be the same ones in every school.
Great question. That was a great question. Committee members, any, any questions? So, I'm curious to know, so with, so with coverage for, it's 35 classrooms from kindergarten to fifth grade?
No, it's 48, actually. Just some, does it say 35?
Well, it says 35 for the DCLO, and then nine.
Oh, yeah.
So, the nine is preschool?
Yeah.
Okay.
Preschool and kindergarten.
Okay. So, the nine is PK and K.
And I also just want to note that this is actually a cost savings, because the cost of the program is a lot more, but they were able to secure funding through, was it, oh, Representative Dougherty was able to provide funding for them to offset some of the costs for us.
Fantastic. Yeah. So, my question is, how many, how many classrooms are not covered? And is there, I would imagine for the teachers who, who have had the opportunity to have leaders in their classroom, probably want to keep going, is there, is there an opportunity to maybe rotate through? Because I know the professional development for the classroom teacher is one of the benefits of the program. So, how are we kind of addressing or talking about getting that benefit out to as many as possible if we don't have the funding or the resources to cover every single classroom? Do you know what I mean?
So, right now, it's, we are looking for teachers that are interested in partnering with RMK, and so that, so we're just, we're servicing just under half of our classrooms, and they are the, looking towards the future. It all, it's all dependent on funding.
Yep.
And so, we have to, and RMK, we've been working with them. They're very aware of that, that we have to make sure that we can secure the funding and ensure that it's within our budget to proceed with the quantity of support in the space.
All right. Great. Thank you. Okay. All right. So, if we have no further discussion, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the RMK contract?
Wiseman, so moved.
And can we get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Okay. So, next up is the approval of minutes. We can begin with the workshop minutes from November 1st. Any comments, questions, or edits on the November 1st minutes? No? So, I'll make a motion, then, to accept the meeting minutes from the school committee workshop of November 1st. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Okay, great. And then, the regular school committee meeting minutes from November 2nd, 2023, with, I believe, some, a couple of small edits have already been communicated. So, any further questions, comments, or edits? Okay. I'll make a motion, then, to approve the Thursday, November 2nd, regular school committee meeting minutes. Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Okay. And then, executive session minutes from Thursday, November 2nd. Does anybody want to hold these for review and discussion in an executive session? Okay? No? So, I, I would make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve but not release at this time, the executive session meeting minutes from Thursday, November 2nd.
Second, DeLuca.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Okay. Moving right along. Next up on the agenda is our update from the student representative to the school committee. Marvel?
Okay. Thank you. So, we had our first student advisory committee update meeting to the school committee, and the diversity and interest was prevailed, had prevailed, as many had different updates and different interests regarding all the schools and what they had shared. Regarding RO, there was, and actually through all of the schools, there was a common theme of kind of like a jovial community spirit, as student voice was brought out and highlighted through the processes that were established, and there was truly a flavorful conversation within RO and Blanche Ames. There were a lot of student activities, especially coming around with the holidays, and all of the other activities have been spread. And then, with the high school and middle school, there's also a lot of schools.
Great. Does anybody have any questions or comments for? All right. Great. Thank you. I, the meeting with the whole team was really great. It was a wonderful opportunity to meet everybody, and so we definitely look forward to continuing that work throughout the year. Okay, great. Next up on the agenda is a schedule of payments. It has been a busy couple of weeks in terms of warrants. So, since the committee last met, we approved via DocuSign warrants 29S, 30S, 31S, 34S, and 35S. So, lots of bills getting paid. All good. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the tiered focus monitoring review. Dr. Cabral?
So, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education conducts a focused tiered, tiered focus monitoring review. Many reviews, but that's one of them. And this one focusing specifically on special education and civil rights. So, Assistant Superintendent Pruitt and Director of Student Services, Craig Davidson, will present the results of the findings and observations of the Department of Education, and, again, answer any questions you might have.
So, you're going to use the screen?
Yep.
Okay. So, do committee members want to stay seated, or does anybody want to move?
It's very, it's a very quick.
Very, very quick. Okay. All right.
And I think you have the slides in your packet as well.
Okay. All right, great.
If that's helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral, and the committee. Dr. Cabral did a nice job just describing what the process looked like. I was able to attend a few meetings last year before I started and know that Teresa Skinner had presented to all of you what the tiered focus monitoring sessions would look like and all the site visits. We just recently received all of our findings back, and on the second slide, you can see all of the areas that we are fully implementing requirements from the Department of Education in many successful areas in civil rights and special education. So, today, Mrs. Pruitt and I want to really focus on the areas that were partially implemented and what we need to do going forward to meet that criteria.
If I can just step in also and just let you know that this tiered focus monitoring was a targeted review, so not every standard was, was looked at and, and fully assessed because it didn't need to be. So, these are the standards. If you look at all of the standards here, these are the ones that are actually assessed that we had to provide information for, and there was one that was found not to be applicable.
So, the three areas in special education that we are going to focus on this year from now through May, the first one is around timelines for determination of eligibility. We're required, as a school district and all school districts across the state, when we have students that are in their initial or their three-year reevaluation cycles, to receive not only their evaluations within 30 days, but a fully drafted and ready-to-go IEP by day 45. During this time, many school districts across the state saw some tough times meeting those timelines. We had, from students being absent to staff being absent, it was a tough three-year period. So, when the Department of Ed comes in, they really focus on your last review cycles. We were out of compliance in some of those areas. So, this year, we are focusing on how to get those IEPs fully implemented and out to the parents by day 45. So, that's the first area around the timeline for determination of eligibility. The second area that you'll see up there is review and revision of IEPs. What the Department of Ed is looking for in this area is really providing the families that final copy of a signed IEP within five school days of that agreement. And so, what we need to do as a school district is, once we have an agreement on that IEP, provide a fully implemented IEP back to the families within five school days. It's good practice within the state of Massachusetts. So, what the state is asking us to do is create a process for our teams within the school district to return those IEPs at a faster rate to our families. In the third area, I think all of you are aware of, especially during budgeting season last year, we were out of compliance in our preschool classrooms with ratios. Last year, within full inclusion models, we had over 50% of the classrooms with students with special education services or students with disabilities. The state of Massachusetts looks for that 51-49 ratio. Typically, what you see in preschool classrooms is eight typically developing students and seven students with disabilities in an inclusion model. Very forward-thinking even before this process had started, because before their site visit from the Department of Ed, you had already held your budget meetings last year and saw the writing on the wall of where we needed to be. When I was able to talk to Julie Evans from the Department of Ed, I was happy to tell her that we are probably already meeting this criteria, and we just have to provide the update of our ratios right now. When we went through that, our ratios are in line with the state recommendations and guidelines. We were able to add a couple of sections of preschool classrooms, and we have our typically developing peers fully enrolled at this point. So, we do have slots open for students with disabilities when we find students in the community through either EI or family recommendations coming in for evaluations. We are in a really good place with that standard right now, and we're happy to report that out to the Department of Ed.
And the last area for continuous improvement and monitoring is around, is in our civil rights, number 18, responsibilities of the principal. And it involves our district curriculum accommodation plan. Our district curriculum accommodation plan was updated last year, and what they found after reading through it, that it was not, it did not specifically state the, the, the reading program that we were utilizing as what, including the direct reading services that students in need of that were receiving. So, we did put that into our plan. Now, we have to show evidence of training. So, by February, we have to train our staff on that update, and then by May, we have to show evidence of conducting internal, internal monitoring activities to ensure that the de-cap is being used. So just so you know, the D cap is a general accommodation plan so that all teachers understand and know the accommodations that could be made universal for all students. And this is, it was outdated. Last year, we spent a long time with a committee, really updating the plan. Some of our members did some trainings over the summer to ensure that our plan was complete. And now we're in the process of, of creating more tools for teachers so that they understand how to utilize some of the accommodations for all their students. And that's, that's our update on our district, on our tiered focus monitoring.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Committee members, comments, questions? So I do, I have a question on a couple of the, so on the civil rights, we heard when, when follow-up, what follow-up is required and by when? And it seems like for, for special ed, item 42, we're in good shape to report out and close that out. What are the next steps for numbers nine and 14 in terms of monitoring, updating, and closing those out?
Of course. So with SE 9, around the timelines, we've actually already started the work towards this. We have three checkpoints during the school year that we report out to the Department of Ed. With SE 9, we started focusing on this in our special education coordinator meetings and talking about what the results were, how we need, how we need to frame, what the expectations are for our teams, and how to advance what our processes are within the district. So when we do receive that consent form back from families, that we're able to quickly provide our staff with those forms, we are able to then start evaluating the students sooner. So we take out some of those areas of concern, meaning absences from either staff members or students during that evaluation period. And then being able to, within the 15 days after the evaluation cycle, be able to provide IEPs at a faster rate. So what we decided as a special education coordinator group was to then move our meetings up. So we're required to conduct all the evaluations and have them to the families two days before meetings. So what we're trying to do is evaluate well before the 30-day mark and hold the meeting right around that 30-day mark. So then it gives us time to be able to produce a fully implemented or a fully developed IEP implementation at the end of the 45 days. So over the course of time, we have to create a process that will share with the Department of Ed, they'll certify it for us, and we'll have to train our staff on what that looks like. And then for the second area around providing IEPs within five working days, again, it's really a process within the school district that we'll create and then provide training around it to our staff. They'll probably go hand in hand. Really, you're seeing this more within the annual review cycles, so years two and three of the, of the special education process. The reason for that is your first initial evaluation and your three-year evaluation will fall under SE 9. So this is really about the annual review. When you meet at that annual review and you're developing the IEP for that time, it's really a draft format. So our goal now is there, we need to follow good practice and provide families within five working days a fully developed IEP for them to review and then provide us the signature map for implementation.
Jen, I have questions. My question is, do the special ed teachers have enough time to prepare these IEPs? Or do they have so many students that it's cumbersome to get the? For example, if a special ed teacher has, I don't know, how many kids do they have? 30, let's say 30. And all of them are in that same, you're talking about the 30-day, 45-day. What if they're all coming up at the same time? Like, do they have enough time?
Of course. So a few things. One is, we actually sat in this room yesterday afternoon as part of my entry plan and had a similar discussion with special education teachers at the middle school and high school. So I did receive feedback on that area. It will come out through my entry plan of what our numbers look like, what the processes are that teachers are working through. The second piece of that, and it was one of the biggest draws to this district, is now having five special education coordinators who can guide that work. So a lot of the paperwork is done through our special education coordinators with help from Ms. Horn in our office, being able to provide those out to families. And the special education teachers really are driving that conversation within the meetings and then providing updates in certain areas of the IEP. I think with the special education coordinators, we're already seeing a better flow, better workflow, and meeting the needs of our families, getting those IEPs out at a faster rate.
Thank you.
And it's just sort of a bit of a tangent, but are, is, are there revisions being made to the IEP itself at the state level? And how does that fold into this work?
Of course. So the only thing that's changing at the state level really is what the form looks like. You'll actually see a communication coming out of my office pretty soon around what that looks like for our families and trainings that go around what the new IEP form looks like. All the processes and regulations within the state and federal guidelines are going to stay the same. So all the deadlines, pretty much everything in there. You know, for processes, it's really around what the form looks like.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Jackie, anything? All right. Well, great, thank you so much for.
For presenting. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote to approve an Oliver Ames High School transfer agreement with Southeast Rehabilitation and Skilled Care Center. Dr. Cabral?
So I received a communication from Michelle Clark, who is an administrator of Southeast Rehab Skilled Care Center located on Lincoln Street. She spoke to me about potentially securing a transfer agreement for Oliver Ames High School. Many public and private entities that have a large number of people in them have these evacuation plan sites as part of their crisis plans. In fact, we do that in the eastern public schools. So it wasn't surprising to receive the call. However, I did have several questions that I posed to her to get a little bit more information about what they might be needing, considering the population, when it might be, and so forth. So I can share some of that information with you for discussion. I put possible vote because you may have more questions that you'd like me to bring back. And I have a recommendation as well. So the first is the number of residents that potentially could be transported there. According to Ms. Clark, it could be a maximum of 80 patients. Anybody that is requiring 24-hour care would be transferred directly from SER to another nursing facility. So these would be patients that don't require 24-hour care. And most likely would be patients that are fully ambulatory and are just waiting for parents to pick them up or other transportation to another facility. So it's a stopover, if you will. The size of the space required, she communicated that a gymnasium should be just plenty of room for those waiting for rides. I also was curious about how they would arrive. And she did say that they, it would be a few at a time because they would be coming in, they could potentially be coming in wheelchair vans or private cars, which don't hold a great number of the patients. And so it may be a few over an extended period of time. It could be from, anywhere from four to 12 hours because what the issue is would be having, communicating to families to come pick up members or coordinating transportation, which, as I said, could be tricky if you're looking for handicapped accessible transportation. This is all done by the facility, not by any school personnel. But it would really be if they only had to evacuate the entire building. So this is really kind of a worst-case scenario at their facility. The other consideration is that it would most likely, according to Ms. Clark, not be during the school day because during a school day, they would have a better opportunity to contact other nursing facilities in their normal working hours and have the patients transferred directly there. It could be in the middle of the night, for example, or on a weekend. And because it's, would be due to an emergent situation, it, it is hard for her to say with any great certainty. If any patients require medical accommodations, or I asked if they might need assistance or meals, she said that most of them would be the ambulatory residents, again, which do not require much in the way of medical assistance, but they would have their staff staying with the residents while they're at the school, including nurses and CNAs. And in addition, some ancillary staff in terms of organization and coordinating everyone. Again, she reiterated that it would be a last resort because they do have agreements with other facilities that would be their preferred first evacuation site. But part of their plan, they do have to have backup contingency for, for their patients. In terms of a recommendation, I certainly want to get much more information for you, if, if you would like that. If you could provide some direction in, in what you'd like to know, I can certainly meet with Ms. Clark again. Unfortunately, she was unable to, to attend this evening, but we still are in communication. We do have a sort of a similar setup as Richardson Olmsted is an emergency evacuation site in town. And so we do have a setup, if you will, with custodial staff that have opened the emergency center in the past and are familiar with how to do that. We provide them with telephones, and they have contacts that they reach out to. They open the building, they know how to make the facilities available, close off the rest of the building, and so forth. They do get paid overtime to do that. And so the towns specifically are, are friends and colleagues over at the Fire and Police Department specifically have chosen Richardson Olmsted because it has a generator, it has shower facilities. So it best meets the needs of an evacuation point if people were staying for an extended time. We have access to cots and blankets and things of that nature as well. If this were in the middle of the night for 12 hours, really considering like a worst, a worst-case scenario. So if you were to move forward with this, I would recommend that we propose this be moved to the Richardson Olmsted School as opposed to the high school because we don't have that level of preparation there for this kind of event.
Questions?
Go ahead, Lauren. So if, so you said that custodians will get paid overtime. Who pays for that?
We would have to bill the organization, the facility.
Okay. And this is a backup. They have a first option, a preferred option. But what if this was after school or on a weekend when RO, say, if we move it to RO, is being used for something else? It would, we just say no? Or do we remove what is being used for RO for and then?
It would really depend on the circumstances. So say, for example, we had a practice taking place in the RO gym. We could look at our facilities and say, okay, we could move the practice to the Nixon Gym, or we could move it over to BA, or try to make arrangements where we could make it possible for the residents to use the gym at RO.
Good question. Jackie?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So it would be our custodians that would get the call in the middle of the night to come back and set up? Is that correct?
Right. The closest comparison I have to this would be when we set up our evacuation shelter. So we could potentially set it up that way. It is a bargaining unit, and I haven't approached them with this because I don't have all the information yet. So it would be contingent upon that agreement.
Okay. And so in terms of, you said it was, it's really a holdover till they can reach family members to pick them up or they're able to go back. Who, who would be overseeing the people coming into the school to pick up the residents? And how would that work in terms of safety issues?
It would be the facility. So they would have to bring the residents out to whoever's picking them up. And they would be supervising that. They, they would bring their ancillary staff to make sure that they're going home with the right person, making sure that they're keeping track of who's going home and when, and similar to how we. In others, in other words, it would be no school staff whatsoever except to supervise the actual facility of the building.
And just wondering, like, not having other people wandering around the building?
Right. It's, they're only using the gymnasium. So there's no, it's only facility observation to make sure no one accesses any other part of the school building except for the gymnasium.
Okay. Are there any insurance issues with this?
I don't know. I didn't explore that because I wanted to collect any questions that you might have. But David, David Twombly can meet with town council and see. I would imagine that the facility's insurance would be responsible for covering this, but we would vet everything through legal if, if, excuse me, if you ultimately decided to move forward before we did anything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Lauren? What have they been doing? Like, what have, is this, this is obviously new, and the facility is not new. So.
I don't know that perhaps they're updating their plans. I don't, I don't know. Or they may even have a new requirement due to a new insurance carrier. There are lots of possibilities.
I do, I would, I'm curious, especially for an extended stay, you know, something that would take, you know, hours and hours and hours. I would imagine there would be a need for cafeteria usage. So I'd like to get a better understanding of how that would be handled. Do you know, did they have staff who could, you know, use the cafeteria to warm up meals or serve drinks or whatever? Or would we be using our own staff and then just have to bill? And so I think if we could really look, look to the plans that are already in place for RO with, with CERT and the town and, and, you know, use that as a blueprint, that would probably make a lot of sense. But overall, I'm, you know, certainly we want to be a great community partner, and it seems like, you know, to use one of the schools on campus, RO sounds like it's already set up. So thank you for that information around, you know, having cots and other things available. That's helpful information. So, yeah, I'm interested in being, interested in being a good community partner and figuring out a way to proceed with this. So if we can, I think, get answers to the questions that you've raised, the comments we've heard here, and then just vet it thoroughly, you know, using town council and get a robust agreement that covers everything.
Sure.
We should be able to.
And it's, it's important to note that since we are an evacuation shelter for the town, if the reason for a compromise at the building was weather-related or due to no power, they would probably be coming here anyway. So this helps us to be prepared and know exactly who we might be expecting.
Okay. All right, so with that, so no vote on that tonight then. All righty. Next up is review and possible vote on the school committee goals. So my apologies for not getting the revised draft out to you all until, until today. So just reviewing kind of highlights, I believe that goals number one and two didn't have any substantial changes since our last, our workshop discussion on these. There was, for goal number one, step five, I incorporated the language around providing an update on multi-year goals that Dr. Cabral had suggested. And I don't think we had any updates to goal number two. But where Marvel is here, I would love to, if you can take a minute to look at that and would love to know if you have any thoughts on that, if it seems like we are missing anything that you think would be important. So I'll give you a minute to look at that, and if you can give us any feedback.
I do have some feedback on number three, if you'd like to do that while Marvel's.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. Were you able to, I know I get, I shot you a very last-minute request.
That's okay.
To have the director review. Were you able to connect with her?
I was.
Okay, great.
Yep. And we actually agreed on a possible suggestion.
Okay.
Which is, in the first sentence, during the 23-24 school year, the school committee will support the Office of DEIA and actively participate in building a culture of belonging.
Okay, great. Like that? Okay.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Great.
For goal number two for item three, when you're saying a feedback tool, would that just be like something that you do like monthly, or would that just be something that's at the end of the year going to be given out to students?
We could, I guess it's part of what we could discuss, right? What would make sense? What I was picturing was at least sort of a year-end wrap-up. So maybe a survey of some sort, or, you know, whatever, whatever would make sense to all of the participants and be an easy way to provide feedback. And so we can, I think it's something that we can, we would need to discuss, right? And consider what's easy for people to use. Do people want to give feedback anonymously or not? You know, things like that. So do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I thought, like, how I interpret it would be like we'd have discussions throughout our meetings, unlike any feedback that we've had from previous meetings or things that we've realized just as we're doing, as we're gathering information in the schools.
Okay. Yeah, we can, yeah, I think we can incorporate that into sort of our regular meeting practices, and then do some, some sort of formal evaluation at the end of the year. Again, just to make sure that, you know, like, especially where this is the, our first year in a long time of having a student advisory committee and a student representative, make sure that it's, it's a worthwhile experience, that you all got out of it what you wanted to, you know, and hear any, you know, things you'd like to see done differently so that we can just make it, make it better every year. Any other comments on that?
Don't think so. It's good.
Okay. All righty. There were no, I don't think, I don't think I had substantial changes to goal number four, just cleaning up. I think we added the Oliver Ames DEIA Parent Advisory Council meeting as a meeting that ideally a school committee member would be able to attend at least once, and that was a suggestion at our last workshop.
Oh, the only thing I noticed, it says DIEA instead of DE.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Correct that. Okay. And then goal number five, school climate, this is the one that was a substantial portion of our discussion. So did my best to distill all of our notes and to focus our efforts on what's in the purview of the committee. Any, any questions or comments about any of the goals, but that one in particular, because I think that was the one that was least formalized when we last met.
I love how you added positive community norms, experiences, and growth mindset.
Those were your suggestions. So I skipped.
I wasn't going to do that. I wasn't, I was trying to give you credit. Oh, my gosh.
No, I think you did a great job, Jen. Thank you.
Thank you. This was a huge miss, though. Thank you. Well, thank you all for participating in the workshops, and I think we had some really, really good conversations. And I think this went, you know, I honestly, my, my vision was like, we'll set goals, we'll, I was thinking more quantifiable things, but I'm glad that it went in the direction that it did to get of, get to areas that are a bigger lift and more substantive. But I think that, I think we're hitting on really the core of why we do what we do, right? So I'm, I'm excited about this. Okay. All righty. So then, can I get a motion to approve the school committee goals for 2023 and 2024 with noted edits, which, which were adding and actively participate in to the first sentence of goal number three, and correcting goal number four, item two, to DEIA Parent Advisory Council?
Wiseman, so moved.
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call them.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Movements, yes.
All right. Great. Next up on the agenda is public comment, and we have none this evening. Superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So I was able to attend along with Craig Davidson and Carols Perez and Jennifer Starr, the Mass, Mask, Mass and Mask, Mass Association of School Superintendents and School Committees Conference last week. It was very focused on equity, which was refreshing, and I appreciated the ability for superintendents and school committee members in general to have these conversations that are very important, and appreciate the opportunity to attend that. I also gave, as I said a little bit earlier, a tour to a group of architects today of Blanche Ames. It was interesting because one of the organizations that was represented was one that really is focused on facilities and brain science and how environments affect learning and mood. And it was really interesting to them to see all of the elements of how we incorporated that into the building. Of course, that was a huge focus of ours in terms of universal learning and universal design. And so that was a really interesting tour, and they were very happy to see that we had incorporated and had so much planning and foresight into really making use of the building as a teacher, but also all of the ways that we're specifically engaging students who are three to eight years old. And so it was, that was more, one of the more fun ones because instead of, you know, it's, it's great for people to appreciate the building itself, but they really got into, I guess I'll say, the nerdy aspects of the planning that we did. And so it was very exciting to tell them all about the thought processes and how we came to certain conclusions about things and how they were finally incorporating the design, and that was really neat. I also want to remind people that our DEIA first one of this year, community event, is going to be held at Blanche Ames at 4:30 on November 28th. And finally, I was able to confirm with Mr. Ames that the Blanche Ames Celebration, an event, not for the school, but for Blanche and Oaks Ames, is going to be at the Blanche Ames School on January 20th. And so we'll be sending out information about that event, which will include a screening of the film about their life, but also culminating with tours of the building and some other fun aspects to highlight their contributions to the community and how the building pays homage to that. That's all.
Great. Thank you. And let's see, Assistant Superintendent notes.
Thank you so much. I want to share with you that while Mr. Davidson and I did go over our tiered focus monitoring for special ed and civil rights, we also have results from our EL focus monitoring that I'd love to have, bring Anne Weintraub, our Director of Curriculum and EL, English Language Learners, in to share with you the results for that tiered focus monitoring. Anne has done a phenomenal job of putting systems in place, and I really would love for her to share that opportunity with you. And I really am excited about some of the, the growth that we'll see with our, with our EL population. I also wanted to let you know that we are in the midst of planning our next professional development day. We have Cornelius Minor coming to speak. He is an expert on incorporating diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility into curriculum. Many of our principals have actually heard him speak, and we're so excited with suggesting that he come and provide our keynote and that he will, in the fact that he is able to attend our conference, our professional development day, and then provide breakout sessions afterwards for our team. It will be fabulous for him to be here. The day will revolve around diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. We'll have our paraprofessionals with us as well. And we are seeking experts within Easton to come and, our own educators, to come and present some workshops that fall within that realm, whether they're looking at diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility through reading, through content areas, or through exercises, social-emotional learning that they're doing in their classrooms, to provide an array of, a menu of options for our educators. And we welcome, we welcome you to attend as always, if you'd like to come. And that is January 12th. Lastly, I just want to share with you a couple of things that are going on with me that I'm, that I will be participating in in the next couple of months. The first is I was invited, so remember when I went to Panama through, through the grant that we had, that the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents provided? There was an organization there that called World Savvy that I've been participating in a leadership cohort with them for the past year, focusing on leading through difficult times. And they invited me to participate in a speaking session out at the American, the Nationwide Superintendent Association out in San Diego. So I will be conducting a session there representing the Easton Public Schools, leading through difficult times. And I will tell you that I'm, feel very fortunate that we live in Massachusetts. We'll leave it at that, with some of the complexities that are going on throughout our country. I also was invited to attend a, a conference on democracy and education in Boston, and people from, throughout the country will be also attending. I'm very, I'm very thankful that it's in Boston, so I don't have to travel. And that will be in the beginning of December. During the workshop, it's for two days, I'll be working with leaders throughout higher ed as well as organizations and fellow educators to add global, global, global perspectives into the framework of civics education and align on learning science and pedagogies that deliver enhanced engagement and relevance in learning, and then also to map the field of high-quality international history and civics resources for educators worldwide. So I'm very excited to be part of that and be representing Easton with these opportunities and be able to bring that back to my work with the curriculum leaders.
Amazing.
So that's all I have.
All right. School committee notes. Nancy?
Sure. All right. And have we had a meeting since the vote and since Town Council?
No, so you can share.
Or do you want to do that?
Tell you.
All right. So thank you to the voters that went out to vote. 2,189 people voted, and the safety project moves ahead with the, with 60 votes, by 60 votes. But anyway, that will move along. So thank you very much for voting. Also, thank you to Jen Starr and also Dr. Cabral, but Jen, for going to that conference. Oh, boy. She'll tell you more about it because it's kind of crazy. But anyway, that's what happens when you put a bunch of people in the same room. Okay. And then you made.
Just to be clear, you're talking about the delegates meeting.
The delegates meeting. Oh, all right. The delegate meeting.
Jen Starr was part of that. We were not.
But, and Jen, well, she goes to all the games, she goes, she's like, I don't think she goes home. She just travels around Easton. And you may have noticed that Michelle is not here today, and, okay.
Go ahead. You can.
I can do this.
Yes.
All right.
Well, do we want to just announce an order of business first?
Okay.
We, Michelle Durant, after more than six years of service on the school committee, has decided to step down. And we certainly thank her for all of her years of service and wish her the best. From a business side of things, the town will be sharing information about the vacancy and the process to apply because we will need to appoint a new school committee member. So we are working with our partners on the select board and on town administration on those next steps. So anybody interested can keep an eye on the town website for more information on how to proceed.
Right. So I just want to say, I respect your work, your tireless efforts, and your technology skills, because you, you were the one with like the Facebook and the this and the that, and that was really good. Plus your robotic skills. You have made us a better team, and we will miss you on the committee and all of the other committees that we serve on together. And I just, I'm glad you're friends. We're friends now, and, and I enjoyed our time together, even during the pandemic. So good luck, Michelle, and we'll miss you. Come and visit. Come and be a participant. Thank you.
All right. Jackie?
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm echoing a lot of what Nancy said. I want to thank Michelle for her service over the past six-plus years. When, as Nancy said, when we, when she started, we really didn't have any presence on social media, and she kind of opened that up for us. She posted when our meetings were, she posted our agenda, she made a presence for us, and I think that was really helpful to connect us with the community. Michelle is the one who volunteers for everything and has the love for our district to follow through. She has attended maybe every music production and robotics competition. She's given her time and considerable energy to multiple groups, even after her boys graduated OA. I have enjoyed working with her very much. I will miss her on a personal note. She's been a very good friend to me. She's always been there when I needed her during difficult times, and I look forward to our continued friendship, and I wish her all good things in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. All right. Lauren, updates this week?
So I also echo everything that has been said. I personally want to thank Michelle for, I think oftentimes, literally holding my hand when we were running together, because I had no idea what I was doing. So I will forever and ever be grateful for that. And I appreciate watching Michelle throughout the years as a leader, and, and I feel very fortunate that I can now call her my friend.
Okay. All right. Where to start? Do the Michelle first, or the updates? Oh, do updates first. And then, I'll do updates first, and then give us that off. So lots of, lots of good stuff happening in the district as always. So in, in the world of sports and music, the marching band is the three-time New England School Band Association champion. So they put on an amazing performance in Lawrence a couple of weeks ago, and I believe this is the first time that they have had a three-peat since the mid-1990s. So congratulations to the band and to all of the volunteers and parents who help make that happen. It is a massive team effort to, to get the students and their, their instruments and everything on the road and up to the field, and especially, congratulations and thank you to Mr. Benson for doing such a wonderful job and inspiring our kids to, as he says, better every time, right? So great job there.
Can I just say, think of what you just said. The first time there's been a three-peat since the 90s. Not the first time they've won.
Right.
The first time it's been a three-peat. They're amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, like the, the winning stats.
That's the bar now.
On the school program is just, it's just unfathomable, really. They're unbelievable. And then on the sports side of the house, the OA girls cross-country team, again, so again with repeat wins, won the Division 1C state championship last week. And they, they had a shocking number of, of girls who finished in the top 10, and it gave them a score that was, I think they had 31, which is, the smaller the score, the better, and second-place team was like 88. So it wasn't even close. Like, they so dominated. So, great job. The boys had a strong day, too. I think they finished fifth. And then some of the top boys and girls will be running on. And then some of the top boys and girls will be running on Saturday at the All-State Championship. So for individual. So great job there. And then fantastic job to all of the fall sports teams. Our, our last one standing are boy soccer, who are going to try to defend their D2 championship this weekend. So we may have a repeat state champ in boy soccer as well. So there's a fan bus, I think. I know a fan bus was possibly planned. Students needed to express interest like really quickly to decide whether or not to run it. The game will be in Lynn on Saturday at 3 o'clock. Then for upcoming events, oh, and Bay State Show Choir Festival was last weekend as well. And I, I heard it was phenomenal as usual. So think, anything else going on, Marvel? Not big stuff? Yep, I normally have my.
Spirit Week and Homecoming.
Spirit Week, Homecoming, lots of good stuff. And then a nice, nice Thanksgiving break for all of our, our students and their families and staff. And then finally, Michelle, I hope you're watching. Michelle has been the epitome of quiet leadership. It has been a privilege to have worked as her vice chair for a couple of years while she was the chair and as a chair. She just demonstrated kind of the roll up your sleeves and quietly lead and get to work approach, which was, I found incredibly valuable to, to learn from and to be able to work with her. And, and she did a great job of, of teaching me how to be a chair and what was involved. So I hopefully will be able to carry that forward. Cause she's a, she's a teacher. That's what she does. And she does a great job of it in every aspect. So, and has just been a tireless volunteer behind the scenes, just doing so much for music, for robotics, for the Human Rights Committee and, and for the school committee. And her love of this district and students and staff is really unparalleled. So thank you, Michelle, for your work and your leadership. We are very grateful that we got to work with you. All right.
Can we?
Yes.
Okay. Sure.
I just want to thank Michelle for, as, as the person that works on the curriculum throughout the district. I always felt Michelle's support. She was always supportive whenever we were going through an adoption process. Like a, like a cheerleader behind us, always nodding her head and supporting us as we, you know, we did the science of reading and adopting a new literacy program and understanding the, how, how much of an undertaking it would be on our staff. And she was always very supportive, asking questions, making sure we were covering every aspect. And she's always been, I think, just such a champion in the areas that you had mentioned, Jen, but also in curriculum as well. And I always felt very, very supported by her. Again, I consider her a friend as well and I will miss her. And she better keep in touch. And I thank her for all of her commitment to Easton and the, the staff, the students and also to me.
Thanks. So Michelle is extremely passionate, engaged. Just has so much volunteer time in, in the schools, which, you know, a lot of the things that we run, we can't without volunteers. And so that's critical for our operation and for providing a really well-rounded experience for our kids. Positive about schools, which is great. It's very helpful to have a teacher's perspective on the, the school committee. So between Nancy and Michelle, it was really, you know, very interesting to be able to talk a little bit deeper about some of the curricular things or to talk about something and them saying, yes, we know exactly what you mean about that. So a lot of people think that the school committee is very similar, but they're very different personalities and push back on one another. And I've always thought that to be very healthy and welcomed. And, and so that was a great contribution to the school committee. And, you know, I was able to work with Michelle as vice chair and chair and vice chair again. And so, you know, being part of all those conversations and just kind of learning from one another, I think was, it only makes us better. So we appreciate all of the time. I know it's not going to end. I hope it's not going to end. And that we can see Michelle around a lot. And I want to keep talking like she's going to another continent. So hopefully we'll be able to, you know, continue to have her support and we'll continue to support her in whatever she chooses to do.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yes, absolutely.
Although I didn't know her for as long as you guys, and I only knew her for a short amount of time, I think her presence was also very notable. Because even from the first meeting that I attended, she had a very welcoming tone and expressions. Always great. It was very scary coming onto the committee. But I, I know, but I truly appreciate everything she's done as well. Known her as long as you guys.
Thank you.
That was nice, Marvel. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And for the first time in a long time, we have no executive session.
That's correct.
Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
DeLuca, so moved.
With enthusiasm.
Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right, great.
And so next.
Oh, sorry. Next meeting is December 2nd? Yes. Okay. All right. Great. So yes, December, let me just double check, 7th? Thank you. At 6:00 here. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.